The three of us in the room, I think the others are trickling in and our apologies for the slight, slightly late start. Welcome to this Wednesday, July 29th, City Commission Workshop on the Budget. And I'll now turn the microphone over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have any citizens, citizen speakers today. And thank you for the time. Over the last eighteen months, we have reviewed the city's operations to ensure that our organization is operating at maximum efficiency and is positioned to carry out your priorities, addressing public safety and infrastructure investment, while ensuring that the cost of municipal services is reasonable and provides an effective product to our citizens. Last year, you voted to eliminate the business tax and reduce the property tax rate. On your June 14th of this year, you affirmed your commitment to hold the line on property tax and voted to not increase the property tax rate for FY 2018. Based on your leadership and direction you have provided, we have proposed a balanced budget for FY 2018. Today's workshop will provide an overview of the budget for next year and an update on the current year budget. Robert Wigan and other staff are here to provide an update and get your further direction.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioners, Mayor, appointed officials, we have a workshop to discuss the fiscal year 18 budget. At this workshop, our goal is to accomplish the following items, as referenced in the agenda item. As Rick mentioned, this has been an eighteen-month process. We've completed the closeout of fiscal year 16 with its lessons, continued to do monitoring of fiscal year 17 with its direction, done strategic planning updates from police, infrastructure, Star Metro, and then policy updates as a result of those goals that we've established. Ensured that we've had regular feedback and discussion of assumptions and results that are also reflected in the budget. In this workshop, I'll also review department actions to establish the city financially for the future and to ensure that we have a balanced budget for the five-year pro forma. And then we have two remaining budget meetings and actions to take at those meetings, and those are listed on your outline. Very quickly, the perspective that we've maintained are represented in the first three bullets where we talk about the municipal cost comparisons, transparency, and feedback that we get from the citizens. As you well know, the municipal cost comparison, we identify full service cities, compare ourselves in population and size and governance, and then compare cost of services that are delivered. It gives us perspective to know that we're operating efficiently, effectively, but also then cost-effectively. And that has been one of our guiding principles as we move forward in this budget process. Additionally, the final three bullets are some of the major principles that we've been operating with. City Commission have added over fifty public safety positions in the past three years. We have the current COPS grant positions in the budget for fiscal year 18, fully funded. The city has committed to road and sidewalk maintenance program, and that has been increased in fiscal year 18 to $6.5 million, and that is represented in a balanced budget. And then departments have reorganized to increase their efficiencies and effectiveness while ensuring that they deliver service at the highest levels. So again, using those assumptions and approach, as we move forward through the fiscal year 18 budget plan, there are certain other discrete assumptions that we operate under. They include the mileage cap of 4.1 miles, working within existing positions, and the added public safety positions, that employees will remain whole while sharing health and pension costs, and then outside agency funding will be deliberate and outcome-oriented and funded at your direction. Based on these assumptions, we've got a fiscal year 2018 general fund budget that totals $152.9 million. It represents an increase of $1.3 million over fiscal year 17, or nine-tenths of a percent of an increase. We've talked in the past about the general drivers of that, and that includes the growth in property taxes, the repeal of the business tax, and then about seven-tenths of a percent growth across all revenue categories. It also then, also reflects general fund expenditures that include the road and sidewalk maintenance assumptions, and then personnel costs for the filled positions that we have in the organization. For a monetary view of this, we've provided the fiscal year 18 through 22 general fund pro forma, and the table that you see here shows fiscal year 17 adopted budget, the fiscal year 18 through 22 City Manager proposed budget that's balanced, and then also by major account and by major category within the general fund. This budget includes $56.6 million for 410 sworn police officer positions and public safety positions, $35 million for public infrastructure and transit, $22.7 million for parks, recreation, and neighborhood affairs. And then in the general fund, we also include community housing and human services, transfers to the CDA, and we also act as a pass-through agent for the CRAs. The other thirteen operating funds are balanced with similar assumptions and are available in the agenda item as balanced budgets for the five-year pro forma. Some details on the general and enterprise funds changes that are assumed for this upcoming five-year period. You know, the departments have gone through a reorganization, and it's balanced based on that, department implementation of the reorganization and those opportunities that they've identified for efficiencies. All of these actions are good business practices that they've been able to identify. There are sixteen positions in the general fund that are being reorganized or reduced as a result of the lessons learned in fiscal year 17, thirty-one positions in the enterprise funds that include transfers, and then there are two additional positions that are budgeted for the legal department and audit.
Commissioner Zipper?
Do you have a breakdown of whether these are through attrition or whether these are actual?
Yes, there is a table in the agenda item in general broad categories. About a third of them are through attrition or transfers. They're either vacant positions or retirees or transfers to other departments. Another third are still being evaluated to understand exactly how we accomplish what's expected to be accomplished with the reorganization, and then that leaves the balance as layoffs.
Okay, thank you.
The second third that you described could also be layoffs, but we don't know yet?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner?
Rob, do we know what level those positions are? Are they administrative? Are they?
Commissioner, there are all levels of the organization, from division heads down.
Yeah, one thing we've asked of the departments is that they work closely with human resources. We've, again, in not making this a budget exercise, that we want to make sure that we look at them by position and by their impact on the organization and their equitably distributed. Thanks, Rick. Commissioners, part of these reorganization efforts consider customer outreach efforts and administrative support functions, and they reduce the workforce and save approximately $1.2 million annually. Another aspect is, in utility departments, is there are existing work crews that are being consolidated and then also being repurposed to address roadway and sidewalk improvement needs. Those repurposing and workforce changes are savings of about $2.4 million. And then we've talked about insourcing and outsourcing of services from HVAC maintenance to fire inspection to contract services, and those benefit the organization by about a reduction of a million dollars. As part of our, you know, providing perspective, we look quarterly and report quarterly on what our progress is for the fiscal year 17 budget. What we're seeing for the third quarter is a balanced budget. We're looking at $150.3 million in expenditures and revenues as a balanced budget, a slight reduction in revenues, but also then because of vacancies and some cost savings within the departments of managing their own budgets, then that offsets the reduction in revenues. We are seeing a trend we identified in risk management that we've addressed in the budget is starting to be realized in fiscal year 17. And so we're asking that as we move forward and identify exactly what that cost is, that we'll bring back that information, but also have recommendations on use of reserves and/or available funding sources from the general fund to offset that cost. Essentially, there are increased costs in workers' comp and settlements that we have planned for in 18, are starting to see them culminate in 17, and so we'll be able to address those as we move through the last quarter of the year. Electric, gas, and golf, more recently, continue to be impacted by weather experiences, but each of those funds have reserves and management options to balance their budgets. You'll have the opportunity to see the golf recommendation to improve their capital, their facilities through capital improvements later in the agenda item this evening. And then Star Metro continues to monitor their staffing levels to address difficulties they've had with overtime, but they expect by the end of the year, and have seen the results thus far, that they'll be able to balance the budget by year-end, even though those overtime costs increased in the first two quarters. The capital budget, as you may recall, we talked about in early December, to start that process early so we could have the necessary discussions to balance the budget from a capital perspective. Departments were working on available funding, evaluating the progress of projects, ensuring that those that are progressing are prioritized, and that funding will be available as soon as any obstacles or delays in a project, obtaining right-of-way, finishing evaluation of impacts on lands, those sort of things. As soon as those are overcome, then funding is available for those projects. We've continued that analysis and since December have talked across departments as a group so that we can make sure that we're scheduling projects appropriately, that we have the funding available, and that we're addressing the most current concerns at a current time. In the fiscal year 18 capital budget, total funding available for all government public infrastructure that can be cash-funded from the general fund transfers made available by grants, and then also by sales and gas taxes is estimated at $17.2 million. Some grant-funded projects that are budgeted in fiscal year 18 expected to proceed are the COPS grants, COP grant and body worn camera grants on the general government side. The water and wastewater rate study is currently underway. It's primarily focused on what infrastructure needs are necessary to maintain the infrastructure that we've built, and it's appropriate for the system. There are capital bonds that are projected in that capital plan for fiscal year 18, and reimbursement resolution will be brought, proposing that capital expenditure. The new rates that will then support that infrastructure needs is currently being evaluated in the rate study will be brought back in September with an expectation that any rate changes would proceed in October.
Robert?
Yes?
Is it unfair? Do you remember the amount of those capital bonds for 18 on the?
On the capital bond side?
Yeah, for the water and sewer.
I think it was in the hoof of water and sewer. I think the new money needed is in the $30 to $35 million range. That was the last, I heard, that may have been updated in the last few weeks, but that's pretty close.
Yeah, we've been meeting with the treasurer clerk and the utilities on a quarterly basis to talk about the progress of projects and then to give them early identification of participating in the market when the bonds are necessary, so we minimize those costs. It's been a pretty successful process. And as you well know, the energy system has a planned bond issuance for the fast-start generation units. We've already approved that reimbursement resolution, and then those debt service payments are scheduled in the capital budget for repayment of those units and construction of those units for fiscal year 18. After the June 28th meeting where we discussed the progress of the budget, the fiscal year 18 budget, you had asked for an update on Star Metro operations, and Reese Code has offered to provide that update on Star Metro operations, and I'll turn the microphone over to him.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we'll be brief, but we thought this was the perfect opportunity to share with you an update on Star Metro. As Robert mentioned, the topic was discussed at your last meeting, and you'll recall that you got an update in January about the general direction and the priorities and efforts over all of the department. So I've got a couple slides. I've generally categorized these slides into our fixed route service, which is our predominant piece of our service, as well as our dial-to-ride, our point-to-point on-demand service. The first bullets I have indicate the main areas of focus, which are route performance. So we have fourteen main fixed routes, as well as the technology related to those routes. Underlying all of that is improving the route connection times and productivity, so we know connections are now made at CK Steel predominantly. We have the majority of our routes connecting at our hub. That has been the historical way that the system has operated for time. The system was restructured, and it was point-to-point along major corridors. We found that our riders preferred to connect at the plaza that helped them get where they needed to go. It reduced their total trip time, travel time, and so based on that feedback, we've essentially restructured the system back to kind of a spoken hub system. They preferred it, it seems to be going well, and we continue to evaluate that to make sure that's effective. One of the efforts that has been underway over the last year, six months, certainly is to improve the connectivity. So in other words, you take one route into the CK Steel Plaza, you make your connection to a different route to get to your ultimate destination. I wanted to make sure we shrunk that connection time as much as we could so passengers didn't have to wait at the plaza for an extended period. At the moment, twelve of the fourteen routes that connect in with CK Steel essentially have no waiting times based on the scheduled routes they connect and they clear. So in other words, these routes come in simultaneously, passengers are able to move about those routes and get to their destination. The remaining two routes, the schedule is a maximum of fifteen-minute wait. So that's, as we all know, as we travel and use mass transit and other forms, that connection time is an important piece, ultimately factoring into your total travel time. Much focus has been placed in that regard. In addition, we've put in place for about half of our routes an on-peak, off-peak method of scheduling. I think we can all relate to there's peak times of travel, however you might travel. We have evaluated that on some routes, it's more pronounced than others. And so in that case, we've implemented where we've augmented the peak time, you've put more resources on the routes where you increase the frequency, and then off-peak time you reduce that, and that's seemingly working very, very well. We've only done it on about half of our routes because the others, the data didn't support it. We had good travel throughout the day. So we put that in place, we continue to look at that. One of the principles we're following is that it's a dynamic system. We're constantly looking at our riders' habits and patterns and their usage to make sure we're adjusting as need be. So we don't want to be static, we want to be dynamic in how we schedule these routes and times.
So do we have a name for this, like something like Nova 2017?
No, sir, no names. Just good, hard work, yes, sir. I'll give an example of one of the routes that we've altered is our Big Bend route that predominantly travels north and south. The southern portion of that route that connects at CK Steel and then travels south, mainly along Monroe and Adams, ultimately down to Capital Circle and turns around, we've increased that frequency to an every thirty-minute route all day. We found the riders were using it a lot, they were connecting to jobs, they were connecting probably in particular to shopping. The southernmost point of that route is the public shopping center there on Crawfordville Highway, so that's a destination for riders. Those are the kind of efforts that we see underway in the fixed route service, is to match the service to our customers' habits and patterns, and I think that is going well. You got that update in January, so we've continued that process.
If I could, in all seriousness now?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm going to give Charlotte as an example, and it was a rail system, but when they put the rail system in, what happened was wherever there was a stop, there was a tremendous amount of growth, because people wanted to be near mass transit where they could get in and out of the city quickly, and that was by design. So I guess what I'm leading to is, we have these routes now, and what you just said is we're trying to meet our customers' needs as far as where they are, but at some point, and we may already be doing it, but should we not try to drive more development if we can where our existing routes are? And I'm going to use an example, for example, Commissioner Richardson, previous meeting you were talking a lot about a South city, CRA, and we're talking about potentially redoing the housing stock that's on Orange Avenue. Clearly, if we're going to do that, then our mass transit system should be designed to try to meet where we're trying to drive development. Do we do that, or are we just following where our customers are? Are we trying to get them where we think there could be development?
Yes, sir, that's an excellent question. I think it's a two-part answer. So as we speak today, we want to make sure that we don't waste miles, so we don't want to travel where people aren't.
Right.
Not in anticipation of where people might be, but we want to stand ready to go where they're going to go. So we understand where the development may be going, we understand your direction of where we would want to encourage density. And so we stand ready to serve those areas. We may even test certain routes, but we want to make sure we don't overthrottle the frequency. You know, we've heard for many years, you know, you have buses riding around without people on them. We're very sensitive to that. So I think we've been talking about the superstop that's in the blueprint money in the future on Orange Avenue. I think that's a good example of where we would anticipate to have some density, anticipate another method of our system to where you could connect people, aggregate them, get them to where they need to go. So I think we always have to look ahead, but we don't want to oversupply based on what we see today, because those miles are so precious and those miles turn into dollars. That's our approach as we stand here today.
Years ago, way back, I think it was up at Thomas, who wrote about Bannerman, remember there was like a little parking lot? And the whole purpose was, so are routes, are we doing that based upon also where there are potential areas where people can drive, let's say halfway in, and potentially then take mass transit and the rest of the way? I mean, I'm assuming we do all that, or?
Well, those are interesting ones because they tend to be on-peak, off-peak. And I think the on-peak, off-peak method that we've put in place now enables exactly what you're talking about. In the past, we would have done it where we would have had constant frequency throughout the day, so you'd have had underutilized capacity. I think we're opening the door for exactly what you're describing, so we have a method that we can all accept as riders and as operators. The bus may not run constantly throughout the day, but it may serve a need that you have in the morning, in the evening, and you have people aggregating at parking lots and things of that nature. I believe we've turned that corner, but again, we're trying to be very judicious with the use of those miles.
Thank you.
Reese, and I think that Southwood routes are a perfect example. So we used to have five to seven routes from different places that went to Southwood, most of them empty except, and now we have the express route from CK Steel to Southwood, and it serves everybody, and it became so popular that we had buses. And then FDOT, if you remember, you approved, they came in and they're paying us money to make a stop at FDOT, so we sort of diverted the route to stop by FDOT, pick their folks up and bring them to Southwood. And on the north side, we have not seen the need, as you know, we abandoned that route a long time ago, but we stand ready because we go all the way to Walmart on?
Cary Forest.
Cary Forest, yes. And if we need to provide an express route there, if the demand became, we are able to do that.
Thank you.
So we wanted to share that with you in terms of kind of direction and trends for the fixed route, and that's in terms of the route productivity and making sure we're meeting the needs of our riders. Coupled with that is the technology we have on our buses, as well as the bus stops themselves. I'd like to start with, we've been adding new signs that add clarity to the route throughout our system. Included with that effort is the deployment of Braille lettering on all of our signs. And we'll be the first in the state, I'm very confident to say that, and we believe in the nation, to put that in place. So other systems have a portion of their systems in Braille lettering. This came about some number of years ago. John Pliskow, which I think many of you, if not all of you, know, he is a member of our visually impaired community in Tallahassee, is a great advocate for that community as well as for Star Metro. He introduced the concept, I believe, to Assistant City Manager Jay Townsend a number of years ago, and it really caught legs over the last year. Terry Lowe and his staff have done a good job putting that together. I'm told we'll be complete by the end of the month, so it's largely complete, something we should all be proud of, and I think that will benefit the entire system. In addition to that, in fact, John and I have had a number of conversations about the electronic announcements on our buses. Historically, we've used operators to do the verbal announcements of upcoming stops and major notifications. You can imagine that from the transit we've all ridden. It's a good clue to know where you stand, especially for those that are visually impaired. They can hear it verbally, they understand where they are in relation to the route and know where they're to get off. We have brought more consistency to that by making it electronic. We've used our software on the buses to make the electronic announcements using GPS as we approach the stops. The next step in that is to announce when we're making turns to major intersections, so not just approaching stops, but as we change roads, so that there's a general orientation of the rider where we are. That really, Terry Lowe and his staff jumped on that very quickly, made a lot of progress, and I think that was a big enhancement to the system, whereas we were not as consistent as we would have liked to have been in the past. This brings about that consistency and accuracy. In addition to that, Wi-Fi that is almost ubiquitous now, we all look for Wi-Fi so we can be on our devices and be productive when we have downtime. We've added it to all of our buses free for the patrons. Find My Bus app goes right along with that for those patrons that are using smartphones. They don't have to rely upon the old static schedule, which inherently gets off based on traffic. In other conditions, this is a GPS-based system, so our riders can see where the buses are and anticipate when they're going to be at the stop. In fact, we have two apps that do similar functions, the choice of the rider. One of the apps we have will actually notify you based on your preference when the bus is, say, five minutes or ten minutes away from the stop, making us all much more productive. Those have been well received. Also, we updated you, I think at the last meeting, could be two meetings ago in June, about a pilot with DOT for mobile ticketing. We're very, very excited about that. We're excited about it for our system. We're excited about it that DOT thought highly of enough of us to test it in our system. Our read of it is that they would like to test this model for deployment around the state, almost like the Sunpass model. You have a Sunpass, you travel all the toll roads in the state of Florida, and they're trying to gauge rider adopt, you know, adoption and usability, and they chose us to partner with that. So our customers are able to take advantage of it, and that should be in motion in a few months. Pretty good news.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
If they do put that in place, will it work the way the Sunpass works in that anywhere that you go?
I think that's the vision.
You'd have your credit card on?
I would not want to quote them on that because this is my interpretation and read of it, but I think that would be the? But I think that would be the idea to, if you had travelers moving about different systems, that they could use a singular app and have that financial tie to the app and, and easy to use.
Yeah, that would be.
First and foremost, they have to understand how riders might use it. But I think that would be the concept of it.
Well, if you had, that's an added value, basically. If you have a, a card or whatever that is programmed already directly to your credit card or source of, wherever you, you fund it from, the way the Sunpass is, and, and then you are able to use it here, you're able to use it on a transit system in Tampa, you're able to use it on a transit system in Miami. I mean, that would really make it more appealing, I think, to a lot of people than just, there's one in Tallahassee and then there's another one. So in, and I'm just posing that in your discussions with them. If that ever comes up, they might want to look at it on a more broad-based use than just one city.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We'll certainly share that. I, it, it, it certainly has a very bright outlook. And I think it's probably an indicator of encouraging mass transit in Florida. So, so make it easier for riders to use and available to them. Finally, on the fixed route, a topic that has been much discussed and has been a very difficult topic is the addition of benches and shelters throughout our system. So when we updated you in January, we have 865 stops, not including the campus stops, throughout our system, largely the city of Tallahassee. Just over 200 of those had some form of a bench or a seat or a shelter. In fact, the shelters, I think, were around 100 of the 200 that we had deployed. You know, and that's been a topic that's been hard to press forward on. I know you know that. I've got to give a lot of credit to the cooperation, the cross-departmental cooperation with our Star Metro group, with our fleet operations, as well as our Parks and Recreation Department. So I'm not sure how it came about, to be honest with you. I hear different stories. I'm not sure which one to believe. But there was a conversation that occurred with our Parks and Recreation Construction Crew. So we have in-house staff that does basic construction for our Parks and Recreation throughout the city. As you know, that's a pretty massive undertaking. And I guess they volunteered. I don't know. But they deserve all the credit in the world. Brian Hosmer is the gentleman's name that's in charge of the construction crew. They have since January added 56 poured concrete pads that we've added now 43 combination benches and shelters, some of each, on those 56. And they continue to add more each week. This is more activity than we've seen in years. It's probably years combined in terms of our shelters. And it really was a breakthrough because of the staff, the creativity of the staff, the cooperation of Ashley Edwards, Terry Lowe, and all of those folks that have pledged their commitment to do this. And so is doing it at a relatively low cost, is doing it very efficiently. And I think we really have found a model that we'll be able to plow forward with to meet the goal of equipping as many of our stops with shelters as we can. In fact, I'll, I'll take an opportunity to point out, there's a picture in your slide. That's a refurbished shelter. That's another issue we have is acquiring the shelters, the cost of the shelters. And these folks have actually taken, refurbished some, made them look good. And you can see them putting one in place. I believe that's on Thomasville Road, southbound. That was much needed. So kudos to the entire groups that have worked together on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank staff for thinking outside of the box. In 2012, I brought this to the agenda, brought it in 2012, 2013, and 2014. The initial response I got, the first thing we found out is that we had lots of shelters and storage that were not being used, had not been deployed. And we deployed, deployed the shelters. Then we added to them with the two little small seated ones and some additional in the budget. I brought the idea up for using our own crews for making shelters, and I was told that we could not do that because of liability reasons. Made no sense to me because if, if we're liable, if somebody gets run over not in a shelter, I mean, how would we get, be liable more so by providing the person a safe place to sit? So somehow, all those objections that we got for three budget years in a row went away in the last six months, and I think it's fantastic. And, and when you drive by, I don't know, to me, if you're in a car, you don't pay attention to people that don't have a car. They just kind of mold into the background. You don't see them. You don't pay attention to them. But if you start looking, you look at people sitting on the ground, sitting in the rain, sitting in the heat. And we have made tremendous strides on curing that over the last little bit. And I, I'm excited about it. So thank you for your work.
Yes, sir. We've got some, we've got some really creative, hard-working folks, and, and they deserve all the credit. I've been very, very pleased with that progress. Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I'd like to talk about Dollar Ride. So again, we generally functionalize in our fixed route service and then our Dollar Ride point-to-point on-demand service. We've seen a lot of growth in Dollar Ride over the last number of years. In fact, in the chart you can see on your slide, we estimate this year the usage will be about 100,000. In fact, on this slide, it says 102,000 trips. That's as compared to about 80,000 trips in years prior. So you see a strong growth in that service. It's a very, very important service, a very personalized service to get our patients where we, where, where they need to go. One of the, probably the most important elements of that is on-time performance, as you might imagine. So these are scheduled appointments. It could be a doctor's appointment. It could be employment, any number of things that our patrons need to get to. They call us. They can go online and schedule it, by the way. I'll come back to that. And we come and pick them up. So there's a window of time where we pick them up, and then we'll go from wherever we deliver them and gather them and, and take them back home. And so on-time performance has been probably the key metric that we have strived to improve, in particular, over the last year. I'm pleased to say we're making progress in that regard. So far, year-to-date, we're at 88.6%. Our goal is 90%. We know it's not possible to be at 100% because there are circumstances beyond our control, whether it's traffic or any number of reasons. The way Star Metro has been able to accomplish that improvement is in addition to the 24 Star Metro vans that we have, you see depicted on the slide, the larger van that we, I think we all, in our minds, I think of as Dollar Ride. They've augmented that with two, what I'll call, strike vans. So that are not scheduled, they're not deployed in the route. But if something happens and we're not able to make an appointment or we anticipate not being able to make that appointment, they can insert themselves into the daily operation. In addition to that, they've added 14 passenger vans, smaller vans, that are a little more nimble. They're quicker. For passengers that don't need the wheelchair accessibility, we can use those. So we've really augmented the fleet, if you will, the number of vehicles used to try to improve that on-time performance. We believe that probably is, if not the most important part of that operation, one of the most important parts of the operation because we all know you have to get to where you need to go. Doctor visits, I think, are a good example of that. So, so that's something that's been tough to tackle. It's not the easiest solution, but that, that's been of utmost importance in terms of the priority and the direction.
Do, do we have any feel for how much per ride it costs us? Any feel at all? I know that varies depending upon distance and time of day and all those other factors, but I'm just curious.
Yes, sir, we do. I don't have the, the exact number on top of my head, but it's in the neighborhood of $17 a trip, maybe as much as $20 a trip. That would be total budget all, all in, divided by number of trips.
The city of Altamont Springs has a program where if you use an Uber and stay within the city limits, they reimburse you 25%, or they basically pay the Uber 25% of the cost because the idea in their case is to keep commerce within the city of Altamont Springs. Instead of taking, you know, going down to Orlando, Winter Park, you stay in Altamont. I guess my thought is at some point, does it become more cost-effective for us to contract with, you know, an Uber or a Lyft to do these things? And at some point, there'll be autonomous cars. Is it, is it worth our while rather than what we're currently doing?
I, I, I don't think you could ever abandon the service you provide because of the accessibility. And the mayor actually has raised the, the point some time ago. And we continue to explore the idea of using private, private cars, if you will, whether it's Uber, Lyft, or any number of services. In fact, we do have a partnership with Yellow Cab. In certain instances, we pay for vouchers, but that's limited in scope. We continue to look at that. I don't know the answer as I sit here today. What I do know is that, that a portion of our service, yeah, I even mentioned our passenger van in addition to, that's not, that doesn't work for all of our patrons. So we know we've got a core group of riders and patrons that need our service, that need accessibility. And so we've not quite figured out that perfect equation. Not, not because we haven't looked. We continue to look. We continue to look for that model, compare notes with other communities. So I, I don't have any immediate progress on that right now.
Well, they say the best ideas are borrowed, so I guess I'd heard the mayor before you asked that question. I just borrowed it.
No, I, I, I'm glad you did. I wrote it down on my paper as well. Just to explore the potential, because it's not just the, obviously, the convenience of being able to make your own ride, and I think your point around accessibility is really important. There's some folks who will always need a bus with a Lyft or some form of transportation where the assistance is greater than what you might get in somebody's regular vehicle. But I, you know, I, we're cautioned against sort of making the exception the rule, which is why I think it might be worth the exploration of a pilot, even if in the short term, we've got to allocate some dollars to figure that out. But the convenience you have of being able to request a vehicle as you're out doing your errands versus a 24-hour scheduling bit where, based off of how many errands you've got to run, the vehicle may require you to wait 30 minutes or an hour before the bus gets back to you and picks you up. It's just a whole customer experience piece, not to mention the cost that is, you know, potential the cost benefit that might be associated with it. I think it may require a little bit of creativity. In fact, I think one of the barriers might be to some of the ride-sharing companies that we might require a higher level of sort of background check and that kind of thing associated with it, which might mean a discreet conversation or negotiation with a ride-sharing provider that says only folks who can respond to this request would be folks who go through this higher level of evaluation and vetting by Tallahassee Police Department or whatever the agency might be. I'm not, I'm not all the way sure, but I, I do think that the static, not static because it moves, but the system that we have today may not be the one that survives us into, you know, the permanent future. So I, for one, would be very much in favor of, of, you know, folks putting their heads together to figure out whether or not there's a pilot that might work for folks who might not require a wheelchair, are in many ways self-sufficient, but do meet the standard to get access to Dollar Ride. Dollar Ride is an expensive ride. And the conditions for using Yellow Cab are very restrictive and probably for a good reason because it may even cost us more. But we may be in a different day and time where we can leverage our bargaining power to enter into an agreement that, that provides a reliable demand, frankly, demand for some ride-sharing that doesn't exist outside of the legislative session or the school year for students, and that doesn't exist during the regular, normal working day, right? Because many of the demand, if you were using one of the ride-sharing, my guess would come in the evening time and during the legislative session while, during those, you know, pivotal, you know, 60 days or so. So anyway, y'all are the experts at this, but I do think that it might be worth exploring what a pilot looks like. Commissioner?
And this may be old news, but I remember reading it or hearing it somewhere that they'd actually were either piloting or they'd already developed the program that would allow, let's say, me to order a rideshare for somebody that's not in my location to take somewhere else. So my point is effectively, we could still manage the, the service, but just utilize one of these rideshare companies. And I think that probably has benefit too because then it's not leaving it up to just others to use it and then get reimbursed to us to pay the price. We're actually still managing it. And I think that was either already in place or they were piloting it somewhere. In other words, the, the idea was someone like me, even though my parents are deceased, I would be able to order for my parents to get them to a doctor's appointment, and they wouldn't have to worry about anything. They'd just get picked up and dropped off.
We, we've got some really creative folks working for us, and I know they'll take these comments to heart, and we will continue to look and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Yeah. Reese, have you all begun to address the, the issues that the citizens came, with the visual disabilities came before us? I guess it was the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And they raised some issues concerning their experience with Star Metro. Have we begun to address those issues?
The group, the, the main organizer of that group, the kind of the glue that holds that together is John Pleskow. I've talked to him personally on the phone this week. You know, one of their requests was that they wanted to sit down and talk. And we're more than willing to do that, of course. And, and so I said, count me in. I'll be there. And you tell me who else you want to be there, and we can talk. One of the themes of their conversation was, and I think, I think we're going in the same direction. I feel pretty good about it. Was you heard a lot, they were predominantly Dollar Ride users.
Right.
They use the fixed route too, but predominantly Dollar Ride for their needs, was that they saw the trend in the growth in Dollar Ride far outstripping the growth in the population that's using that service. Now, we know our, our 60 and older population in our community is growing faster than otherwise average growth in population. We know that. But the growth in Dollar Ride is far outstripping that. You can see that from these numbers. That's putting natural pressure on that service. Ideas as, as the mayor and Commissioner Ziff just talked about, maybe ultimately is part of the solution. They attributed some of that, if, if you recall, to our previous route structure in Nova 2010 that put pressure back to Dollar Ride because it was more difficult for some of our patrons to ride it. So I think the key measures that we're using today, on-time performance, augmenting our Dollar Ride 24, many Dollar Ride buses, is in fact going to some of their issues. I think these are legacy issues to some degree. They're not new issues. So we're going to sit down and talk with them more. We've got a, a tech group, an advisory committee that met last night. I've not gotten an update since that meeting that talk about matters like this. So we've got the advisory group. I would say we're better engaged with them now than we have been in recent memory. So we're trying to gauge that interest. So, so that's a long answer to your question of, we're engaged. I think there's going to have to be a lot of dialogue. I think we all know there's probably no perfect solution to anything. This is a tough business. I, I'll tell you that. It's a tough business. And so, but we're committed to, to working with the stakeholders.
Are there any of their members or persons with disabilities on your advisory?
John is, and I think the other gentleman just exited the committee that was. John Pleskow is on the committee. Yes, sir.
When we had that meeting and we asked you to put them together to sit down, that's really what, I mean, I believe I made that decision. That's really what I meant. I mean, to reach them after the meeting and ask them to come in and just sit down and, and talk with you, four or five of them and each other, and have a, a roundtable discussion amongst themselves. I respect Mr. Pleskow. He is our representative, though. And it's good to broaden the discussion a little bit and have, without having to add to your advisory committee and get into a real structured situation. But I really had hoped that you would sit down with these folks because they are the users, and they, there were several of them who had really good observations. We can't put ourselves in their place and try to manage from above, essentially. They're the ones that are going to have to come forward and help us get to an answer and a solution. And where you can run by them, ideas like Commissioner, the mayor and Commissioner Ziff put on the table too. And I think it's very important that you do that. So I would ask you again to please consider sooner rather than later, possibly before the end of, I mean, they understood, they came well aware of the numbers and the pressure and the cost and, and those sorts of things. So, but I would feel more comfortable going forward after our September meetings if you had actually gone into some in-depth conversation with those folks and taken some feedback in from them.
Yes, ma'am. And they have. And, you know, particularly that group, the visually impaired group is the backbone of the Dollar Ride community. They've always been, and they have a quarterly meeting.
Now, is that your advisory committee?
That's a different group.
They, they have a quarterly meeting. The visually impaired community has a quarterly meeting at their home office. We will be assigning someone to go to every one of those meetings, get an update from them. They get an update from us and try to work together and, and, you know. You're never going to get to the perfect place, and, and there are always trends and issues that need to be addressed, and they're generally addressed. And, you know, some changes, and really the growth of the users is the biggest issue. Because. because they've always been, I mean, they're used to a certain level of service, and as you can see, the on-time performance is, is getting better. So they're being served better, but in a lot of cases, they were used to having a particular driver, and a particular vehicle, and, and that is important. But with the growth in the system, that's not always possible anymore. And so as these things come along, we try to meet their needs as best we can, because obviously, they are the backbone of the system. So we will be, I think Allison will have someone assigned to, to the board meeting, and every quarter, someone will be there, and we'll keep everyone appraised back and forth.
Can you tell us what level we're reimbursed to? What amount? For each...
What are we, I know we charge, we charge the, the users 250, and then, how much do we get per ride? We'll get that to you.
And then this, the federal government pays for a portion of it, right?
The, the Dial-A-Ride is funded by the general fund transfer.
Oh, completely, there is no... But isn't there a requirement?
There, there is some funding that comes by way of grants, it's, that are for routes outside of the city limits. This service is predominantly a city-oriented service that's funded by the general fund...
And so, the criteria for accessing it are also established exclusively by the local government?
We, yes, sir, that's correct.
Does the growth in the numbers bother you? I mean, you, you just gave a scenario under which the 60, you know, the H60 population is growing at a rate, but this is far outpacing that, that's a problem.
I believe the growth rate in the 60-plus population in our community is around 7%, if I recall correctly, something of that magnitude, and so we clearly are outstripping that. It does concern us. We fear that if you have patrons riding Dial-A-Ride, they could otherwise ride the fixed route, that then you're bumping service or compromising the quality of service. So, it's something we're working on, we think we've got to get the qualifying criteria correct, we want to be careful in how we do it. We've got about 5,000 qualified passengers today. We, we provide about 500 trips per day. So not everyone uses it every day, but we have a very large pool of qualified riders. I think it's something that we'll have to deal with, we want to be very sensitive in dealing with it, especially with those that are qualified already and that expect our need. Is it an issue we have to deal with? Yes, sir, I believe it is.
Are there questions on Dial-A-Ride?
Thank you, Reese, thank you, Star Metro. I'm, I'm excited, these are the conversations that we, we have, should have around the budget. I, I think far too often, we ask the question of, was this in the budget? Can we, do we have enough budget for this? Is this the right, should we wait until we request it in the next year's budget? And that's not where these conversations or, or actions should be happening, they should be happening out in the, in the departments in, in operations. They've, they've got the information closest to, closest to them, they've got the, the community closest to them, and, and they can be responsive as long as we give them assurances that your leadership has, has done that, and Rick's, Rick's direction has done that. We've got some next steps to, to move forward on the fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18 budget. The budgets are balanced, we are asking for one adjustment in the, in the capital program for water and sewer as they move forward in the rate study, they've had one amendment to a capital project to, to provide some supplemental funding, we'll ask you to approve that. And then, any feedback that you have for us, for the fiscal year 18 budget, we want to make sure that those last, those items before you go on break are reflected in the budget, and to answer any questions that you have of what, what is in the budget. As we have mentioned, we've got a September 13 hearing, which will be our first budget hearing, where we'll vote on a tentative millage rate, which you've already directed to be at 4.1 mils, it'll be advertised as such. And at that point, you'll also vote on a tentative budget, take public comment, and then come back on the 27th to vote on a final and, a final millage rate and final balanced budget for fiscal year 18.
I just, so first of all, thank you all for your, your diligent work and the constant updates throughout the process. Manager, you know, you all, we owe you an appreciation because you haven't thrown us in a sort of frantic mode, but if my memory serves me correctly, this may be the la, this may be the, sort of the largest layoff that we've had, probably since the very large and difficult process we went through back in, was it 9, 12? Was it 8, 8, 7, 8? Where actual individuals who have a job today, who thought they would have it till retirement or beyond, will have learned, or will soon learn, that that doesn't exist for them anymore. And I can only imagine the difficulty in that process for those individuals and their families, and so I would just, as just one of the group of us, say that I hope that we are as, and I'm sure we are, because you all are actually making the more difficult decision, your managers, the folks who have to go in and have those conversations, but that we be as generous in that process, and as accommodating in those transitions as we possibly can be working with our partners in the job relocation sector. Obviously, in what it is that we decide to do for the remainder of this year and beyond, but those are, those are extremely difficult, and my heart does go out, these numbers did not escape me, that this is, is probably the most significant set of layoffs this government has had since, since the financial downturn of 2007, 2008, where I think there were maybe 140 or so positions, but a significant number of actual individuals who were impacted by that as well. So, that would be my, my thoughts on, on that. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. You have a fund, list here of funding for outside agencies, and by the Civil Citation Scholarship Program, you have a contingency on a county match, and our luck lately with county matches has not been so great, in the, the study that we, after the storm, you know, resiliency study, and different things like that. So, I just wanted to make sure that if there is no county match, there, our half goes forward. Is that going to work for you all?
If you, if you say it'll work, it'll work.
Thank you very much.
That's on civil citations?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other feedback, thoughts, questions for, for staff before we let them, let them go?
Well done.
Indeed.
Absolutely, well done. Commissioners and staff, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. City Manager, in, in balancing the budget in, in the out-years, you don't anticipate, or do you anticipate any, any additional reduction in force to keep the budget?
No, sir, I think the way the, the budget is balanced, and as you can see, there's some deficits in, in, in two years, and then surpluses in another two years, it basically balances it. It doesn't mean that it won't happen, because things do change, but as we moved out, we did not assume any, any reductions in, in, in the workforce.
Commissioners, the, just a quick reminder that we did receive the money for the hazmat vehicle a year ago, at 3:00 PM across the street at Clayman, I believe it is. We will be unveiling that vehicle for the commission and the public's ability. I do encourage you to take a, take a look at that, and obviously, this is a part of our first responder obligation, badly needed, and we certainly got the federal, the state resources in order to make that happen. Ms. Ferris, anything else to add on that, or?
No, just, we'd love for you to stop by, there will be some TPD, or, excuse me, TFD officers there to give you a preview, it is a hands-on, and then we have some regional partners that are attending as well.
This is not a Michael Toccaus moment, is it?
No, you don't have to, no, no tanks. You're testing all of our history, no, no tanks in the city.
You were like five.
You're right. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. One last point I want to bring up, you know, we've, we've been working hard to replenish the deficiencies fund, and it's within a matter of dollars to the replenishment level, kudos to everyone. I know that we've discussed that any, after we get to that point, we'll have money available for capital projects, and that it, that will be the next opportunity. In the budget, it says to buy down debt financed capital improvement projects, so could you translate that for me to exactly what that, your intention is with that phrase?
Sure, if, if we have available cash from either land sales or from the deficiencies being fully funded, then we would apply those to, to current capital projects, not necess, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be a recurring source of dollars, but it would be for the first opportunity for, for capital projects.
Well, one of my concerns is that, I couldn't tell from the budget, but it seemed, you know, we've had our, our road maintenance, I'm on road maintenance every time, we've had that, I'm absolutely ecstatic over the fact that you guys have gone basically from zero to six and a half million dollars. I know that we've also now put in place a sidewalk maintenance program, I see it every morning, evidence of it when I go on my walk, that's going to save a lot of trips and falls on people in the future, so that's great. Is that included in that six, you know, the, the estimate was that in order to get our long-term planning for road maintenance on track, that six and a half million was the need per year, and now we're talking about adding sidewalk maintenance back into that, so how does that work exactly?
Yeah, there, there are existing gas and sales tax dollars that we have directed for sidewalk maintenance.
Okay.
We would, we would balance those against whatever progress we're making in the road maintenance. The important aspect to consider is that the earlier we do that maintenance, the less costly it is, and so the more maintenance that we can do, and, and that's the, that's the approach that we're using.
Well, I, I appreciate your attention to that issue, this is really thorough and complete, you know, really informing us. And the other thing that I want to commend you on, this budget process has been so much easier to manage for all of us, at least I'm speaking for myself, and because we're talking about it all the time, we're getting quarterly updates, we're looking at, at opportunities and costs and changing circumstances on a real-time basis versus, okay, kickoff on October 1st, see you next December, kind of see you in November. And it, I think it's, the changes you've made in the approach you're using are, are very, very definitely positive in, in management, so thank you.
Great, here, here. If there's nothing further, we stand adjourned until our 4:00 PM meeting.
Can't wait.
Can't wait.
Good trip.
Somebody invited us.
Had a couple of...